Mayor Atkin?
Yeah.
If I may. Although it's been on the books, the police department has not been enforcing the sleeping in the vehicles. We do respond to complaints of litter. We do respond to complaints of people being parked there. We do ask them to move. We do mark for 72 hours' tow, but we don't cite, we don't arrest. And when we can, we do make it available to them that we do have shelter spaces with the Berkeley Shelter. So although it's been on the books, we are not out there making the people worse off by law enforcement.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And Mayor, if I may, I just want to let you know that we are bringing a report to your next council meeting on the third on our homelessness strategy, and as part of that, there will be some discussion of the bathrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So moving on to another weighty issue, citywide minimum wage. Michelle, I see you poised here to spring up for your report.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Atkin and members of the Emeryville City Council. I'm Michelle De Guzman. I'm with the Economic Development and Housing Division of the city. And tonight, I am here to speak to you about an update on the consideration of a minimum wage for the city of Emeryville. We have two existing wage policies, which I've already recently reported to you in August, so just very briefly. Two of them are in place. One is Measure C, which applies primarily to hotel employees. It also has some additional requirements in addition to minimum compensation relating to labor standards for hotel workers. We also have a living wage ordinance, which was adopted in 2006. It applies to employees and contractors with the city. It was originally $12 per hour. It's increased by the local CPI, and it's currently about $14 per hour. Prior evaluation, the city has looked at the concept of a citywide minimum wage a few times. Back in 2006 was the first time it was considered. Measure C passed at the November 2005, and this was looked at as a comprehensive wage policy. Measure C, the living wage, was looked at and adopted, as well as the citywide minimum wage. And the underlying concept behind all of this policy discussion was the concept of the idea of a livable wage. And some different ways you could conceive of that would be certainly indexing the local cost of living to a federal minimum wage, looking at a basic needs budget. What would be a self-sufficiency wage for a household in order to support themselves without any additional financial support? The direction in 2006 was to defer consideration of a citywide minimum wage until Measure C and the living wage were in place for a sufficient amount of time to determine the administrative burdens associated with them. In August 2014, the summary of those considerations were presented to the sitting council at the time, as well as an evaluation of the administrative burden and recent activity related to citywide minimum wages. And just really briefly, the administrative burden that was reported to the council in August was that the living wage, primarily the enforcement relied on human resources and the city attorney's department. The time spent on that was approximately six hours on an annual basis. Violations were complaint-based, and during the period that was looked at, fiscal year 1314, there were no complaints. And my understanding is there have not been any complaints on the living wage ordinance since its inception. Measure C, 1314, is a stabilized year. There was litigation associated when Measure C was first put in place, and they used a substantial amount of city staff time. But since that litigation has been resolved, it takes approximately 22 hours of finance department and city attorney time. And that is because that Measure C requires hotels to be actively permitted under Measure C. So those departments have to actively review the payroll and other documentation provided by the hotels. And the permit is not issued unless they actually comply with the ordinance. So that's why there's additional time associated with that. Recent minimum wage activity. Back in 2006, there were several cities that already did have citywide minimum wages: D.C., Santa Fe, Albuquerque, San Francisco, and San Jose. In 2014, there was a significant amount of activity that occurred. In August, what had passed at that time was Richmond, Seattle, and Berkeley, and there were ballot initiatives for San Francisco and Oakland. Since that time, the ballot initiatives were passed in those two cities fairly overwhelmingly. And Mountain View and Sunnyvale adopted citywide minimum wage ordinances as well. I believe they did those in December. The dates escaped me at the moment. However, those were pegged specifically to match the San Jose citywide minimum wage. And they did that with, those councils did that with an eye to creating a regional minimum wage. Going back to the 2006 consideration, at the time, staff looked at that. One of the concerns expressed was that Emeryville would be the only city within a larger region that had a citywide minimum wage, and there was concerns about the relative competitiveness. And certainly, given the recent activity, that issue about being the lone participants in the region is certainly greatly dissipated. Other major cities that are looking at proposals: Los Angeles, both the city council and the mayor have put forth separate proposals for a citywide minimum wage, and this is for the city of Los Angeles. San Diego had a more complex history in this past calendar year, in that their city council approved a citywide minimum wage, their mayor vetoed it, and then their city council overrode his veto. And so now it has currently been put on the ballot as a referendum. And so that will go in November, and there's some discussion as to when that would, if the referendum does not pass and the minimum wage is put into play, whether or not that'll be retroactive to the original ordinance or not. The purpose of this is just to sort of give some context of that recent activity. Emeryville, the wage that is on here is actually the Measure C wage. So that's just to sort of show the context. The lowest one at the bottom is the statewide minimum wage, and that is set by state law, so it will rise to $10 in 2016. And then there are no further increases anticipated. San Francisco, you can see, is at the top, and they have graduated increases, and then thereafter, to 2018, and thereafter, it increases by CPI. There's a detailed table in your report that goes through the specific wages, but the purpose of this report is to, or this table, is to show the relative wages. You can see Oakland is just below that of San Francisco. Berkeley, theirs is set by ordinance as well, so they have some increases. 2016 is the last increase, and then it remains flat. And the San Jose, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, which is what that abbreviation is, yes.
So, Michelle, just to clarify, when we're looking at this up here, when folks are looking at this at home, the light blue line that's somewhere near the middle that says Emeryville, that's just folks that are covered under Measure C?
Yes.
We have lots of folks, right, that are working for minimum wage in Emeryville, and that's the line at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the statewide minimum wage.
And where would our city living wage fall?
I did not put that in, but the current city minimum wage is, the living wage, I'm sorry.
Living wage, $14.03.
Is $14 per hour, and it increases by CPI. So it would be relatively high. It would be, you know, below the, well, it actually currently would be above what San Francisco has, because they are, even under their new ordinance in 2016, going to be at So the citywide, the living wages for all of the cities, which I didn't analyze for this particular report, are much higher than the citywide minimum wage. And all the jurisdictions that have minimum wages also have a living wage as well. And sorry, just to sort of finish up. So the, just since I use an abbreviation, the SJMF, MV, sorry. S is the San Jose, Mountain View, Sunnyvale example. So what staff also evaluated since August was the implementation efforts of Berkeley and Oakland. Berkeley's has been in place for about a quarter, and Oakland has not yet begun the implementation, although they've begun the notification and rollout process. So staff spoke to the folks in the two cities who will be responsible for the implementation and administration. Both cities currently are spending about one dedicated staff person to managing the program, and that person manages both the outreach and the enforcement. Enforcement in both those cities will be complaint-based, and they have an internal process through which the complaints are received, investigated, addressed, and then there's also an appeals process that both cities, they vary slightly, but they're essentially the same. And so most of that is, will be managed by the, at the city staff level. And just to look at a larger, two larger jurisdictions, both San Francisco and Seattle. San Francisco has an existing Office of Labor Standards Enforcement. Seattle is in the process of establishing one. And for both cities, they will manage this citywide minimum wage, as well as both cities have some other labor-related legislation that is enforced by this particular office. So San Francisco has a very robust Office of Labor Standards with 18 staff. Seattle is just starting out, so they have seven. But, you know, San Francisco has a, they have their living wage also done by this office. They have their own healthcare requirements. They have family-friendly requirements, as well as newly instituted retail labor standards, which will be discussed later in this presentation. So staff is putting forth in terms of looking and doing an analysis of what a minimum wage might look for, look at in Emeryville, some suggestions that could be looked at. And what is proposed here would be a model that is largely based on the Oakland model. And the basis for that is Oakland is the largest city in Alameda County. It is our immediate neighbor. It creates a lot of the regional economic context. And so these suggestions all stem from that, which is a 1225 initial citywide minimum wage per hour, if it were to start in 2015, with CPI escalations thereafter. Exemptions would be if there is a collective bargaining agreement in place. And Measure C, and the reason this is mentioned in this way is because while if there's a higher wage, the hotel workers would experience the higher wage, there are other aspects of Measure C that are not specifically addressed in a citywide minimum wage, and the idea would be to maintain those while still ensuring that the wages would be concurrent with, throughout all employment in the city. And then also to include a sick leave requirement, one hour for every 30 hours worked accrual, with a cap at 40 hours for employees of small businesses. That would be, in this case, defined as businesses with less than 10 employees, and cap at 72 hours for all other businesses. The main issue, the concern back in 2006, and I think moving forward, is how this would actually be implemented. And the implementation sort of has two main components: the outreach and inquiry handling, as well as the actual enforcement on complaints or violations. There are four main ways that was looked at here. One would be internal administration, which is the model that is being used by Berkeley and Oakland at this point, San Francisco as well. Joint administration, which would be in agreement with neighboring cities. And Mountain View is currently considering doing something similar with San Jose, and their ordinance included a provision for further consideration of that model. Contract administration is an option in which the city would contract out to a private service provider to do this, or to look at it as a private right of action in which enforcement would occur through the judicial system. And while city staff would take care of administration, the actual enforcement would not happen at the staff level. And under the prior three, there would be some level of staff oversight related to So that is the citywide minimum wage. The next major component that has come to play in terms of activities related to workers' rights is San Francisco recently passed labor standards, essentially under what is their, they call their predictable scheduling and fair treatment for formula retail employees ordinance. That was fairly recently passed in October 2014. The purpose behind that was to assist employees in meeting their basic needs and achieving economic security. In the case of San Francisco, they have a definition in their planning code of formula retail. And they define that as any business that has 20 or more retail establishments worldwide. And it is to those particular retail establishments that this ordinance applies. The elements of that ordinance require at least two weeks' notice of work schedules, notice of changes in work schedule, and a compensation schedule if those notice of changes come in less than seven days. Also compensation for unused on-call shifts, and providing part-time employees with the same access to hourly pay, time off, and eligibility for promotions as full-time employees. The staff evaluated what would be needed on a fairly aggressive schedule for the evaluation and implementation of a citywide minimum wage and/or labor standards. And this was, this is one proposal to consider that. Over February and March, conduct community meetings with affected parties, which would include residents, businesses, business owners, as well as employees, doing online surveying as well, in addition to the direct community outreach, to make as many avenues for participation available in April or May, depending on the scheduling of the meetings, reporting back to council on the community input. And then after that, if directed by council, beginning the consideration and adoption of an ordinance by council, as well as developing the administrative instructions that would be associated with that, as well as potentially negotiate any administration or enforcement agreements if they were needed based on the enforcement mechanism considered. And that would be particularly if what was being looked at was a joint administration or a contractual administration. And either late 2015, oh, sorry, late 2015 or early 2016, that the minimum wage and other related provisions could become effective once the ordinance and administrative methods were put in place. So the direction that staff is looking for at this point is, first and foremost, does the city wish to consider establishing a citywide minimum wage? If so, should public comment be solicited based on the elements proposed in this report, modeled after the Oakland initiative, or a different model or structure? Is the proposed methodology acceptable? That was that timeframe that I just ran through. That currently does not include a detailed economic analysis, and that was done in the matter, in the interest of addressing the matter expeditiously, and the fact that there has been quite a lot of activity regionally on this issue. And UC Berkeley has done extensive economic impact studies of Berkeley, Oakland, as well as Los Angeles and San Diego. So there is existing scholarship on the minimum wage and the reasonableness of whether that could be extrapolated to Emeryville's particular situation. However, if a detailed economic impact analysis is required, that can be brought forward later this year, although that may slightly delay that adoption schedule that was recommended. And then the second element of that is the labor standards. What had been brought to the council in the past was more related to specifically wages. The labor standards addresses a broader scope of issues related to labor issues. And does the council wish to further analyze an ordinance addressing predictable scheduling and fair treatment for retail workers? And if so, should it apply only to formula retail? Should the elements have the same elements as the San Francisco ordinance, or are there other elements or additional elements that should be addressed or included? And lastly, should these predictable scheduling and fair treatment labor standards be included along with a citywide minimum wage ordinance, or should it be considered separately? Oops. And with that, my presentation is concluded, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Before I open the floor to council, there's lots of speakers, members of the public wishing to speak. So I'm going to call you up by threes, and you could just kind of line up to speak. Juana Tapia Cruz, Jorge Hernandez, Gary Jimenez, Jose Vasquez. Those are the first four. That's the three, that's four people.
I wasn't hoping or expecting to be the first, but sometimes somebody's got to be the first and take the lead, right? Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Gary Jimenez. I'm president of the Lift Up Oakland Coalition, and I'm a vice president with SEIU Local 10-1. And I would just like to say you have some wonderful staff to hear that are members of ours. We helped pass the Measure FF and Proposition J in San Francisco. We were an integral part of that, reaching out with the community, hundreds of volunteers. In Oakland alone, we gathered over 33,000 signatures in order to put it on the ballot. For us, though, the question is no longer if $15 an hour is what we need, but when we get people to $15 an hour. People are still hurting. Housing, we listened tonight for over two hours about housing and affordable housing. People are hurting, and they need a way to get into housing. And we can look at affordable housing in the way we've looked at it tonight. But the question is, if people still can't afford the affordable housing, is it affordable housing? We have to bring people up out of poverty. $15 is definitely a baseline, just a baseline, for dignity for people. Minimum wage justice for people in our communities. People willing to work 40 hours a week should not be living in poverty. They should be able to live with dignity and respect, not on the public rolls, but being able to earn their way to support their families. We saw the public make their minds up over in the, with the Lift Up Oakland campaign. At the beginning, we worked with our public, our communities, as a labor group, and other labor groups, but also with community groups. And we settled on 1225. That was a little over a year and a half ago, when the dialogue in the country was a little bit different at the time. We've seen that change. By the end of the campaign, people wanted $15 an hour and were questioning why so low at 1225, when it was still one of the highest numbers in the country. So Measure FF moved, and it passed with an 82% rounding up. I think we should have gone for 15, but we didn't. Hindsight is 2020, right? But tonight, you have the opportunity to look through the hindsight of Oakland and Measure FF, to create a just path to lead people in our communities out of poverty and on the path to 15. So I would ask you, nationally, regionally, locally, the dialogue has changed. People's minds in America have made up, we've got to do something to get people out of poverty. America deserves a $15 an hour minimum wage, and you can help make that happen, as in San Francisco and some other places that have actually started to move that there. So I'm asking you, as a council, tonight, to be bold, to take leadership in the region, to be visionary, and take that leadership and lead a way, a strong path to 15. So I want to commend the study, because there's tremendous things in this ordinance that is being proposed, or that staff has proposed, some wonderful things. But I think the one thing that needs to be included in that is not just stopping at 1225, but actually creating a pathway to 15 and then adding CPI beyond that. Thank you.
Juana Tapia Cruz here.
Buenos noches.
Good evening. Mi nombre es Juana Tapia Cruz.
My name is Juana Tapia Cruz.
Es mi primera vez en una junta como estas, so estoy un poco nerviosa.
This is my first time in a meeting like this, so I'm a little bit nervous.
Estoy aquí porque quiero decir que queremos luchar por el, para subir el salario mínimo en Emeryville.
I'm here to say that we want to be part of the fight to raise the minimum wage here in Emeryville.
Soy una mamá, soy una mamá soltera y no quisiera llegar a la situación de querer dormir en la calle junto con mi hija. Es por eso que estamos pidiendo un salario justo para tener una mejor aseguranza.
And I am a single mother. I don't want to get to the point that I have to not be able to afford my rent and live in the street with my daughter, who's 16 years old. And that's why we want better salary, our quality affordable health insurance.
Y mejores beneficios para todos los trabajadores de Emeryville, así como lo están aumentando en el área de Oakland, San Francisco, y otros lugares. Están agarrando más que nosotros en Emeryville. Ellos en menos de seis meses están agarrando cuatro dólares con 25, cuando en Emeryville no hemos agarrado ni siquiera un penny o cinco centavos más.
Uh-huh. So that's why we want better wages and benefits for all the workers in Emeryville. We don't think it's fair that all the workers in the area surrounding us, in Berkeley and Oakland, have been able to raise their minimum wage by at least $4.25, and here we haven't even seen a raise in a penny.
Trabajo en Oakes Corner, un block aquí. Mañana vamos a estar haciendo una acción, una diligencia hacia nuestra gerencia. Nos gustaría si nos pudieran ayudar los consulars de aquí de Emeryville. Sería mucha ayuda para todos nosotros. No somos muchos, pero pienso que la ciudad de Emeryville es muy grande para ayudar a todos los empleados de Emeryville en general, y principalmente mi compañía.
And I also want to mention that I'm a worker at the Oaks, I'm a worker at the Oaks Corner, which is just a block from here. And I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow, we're going to do a picket at 5:00 P.M. in front of the Oaks Corner, and we want to invite everybody to come support us. I know that we're not many workers at the Oaks Corner, but we know there are many workers and supporters in Emeryville, and we'd like to invite you all to come support us tomorrow.
Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Jorge Hernandez.
Mi nombre es Jose Vasquez.
My name is Jose Vasquez.
Tengo seis años trabajando en el Oaks Car Club, Oaks Corner.
I've been working at the Oaks Corner for six years.
Mis compañeros y yo pertenemos al United Here Local 2850.
And me and my coworkers were part of the Union United Here Local 2850.
Por el contrato de nuestra unión, hemos tenido seguro médico para nuestras familias.
And through our union contract, we've been able to have health insurance for our families.
Desafortunadamente, se venció hace dos años y medio.
But unfortunately, our union contract expired two and a half years ago.
Y la gerencia del Oaks no nos ha dado, no nos ha ofrecido un contrato justo.
And the management from the Oaks refuses to negotiate with us a fair contract.
En estos dos años o tres años, el costo de la seguridad se ha incrementado hasta 500 dólares al mes.
And in these two years, the cost of our medical insurance has increased to more than $500 a month.
Y no hemos recibido ningún aumento de salario por aproximadas cinco, aproximadamente cinco o seis años.
And we haven't gotten a raise in our wages for at least six years.
Yo necesito un seguro médico económico para mi familia.
I needed an affordable healthcare plan for my family.
Y como no ganamos mucho, es importante tener un seguro de bajo costo.
And as we don't make a lot of money at the Oaks Corner, it's very important to us to have an affordable health insurance plan.
Estamos dedicados a luchar hasta que ganemos lo que nuestras familias necesitan.
And we're committed to fight until we win what our families deserve.
Si ustedes suben el salario mínimo, pueden ayudarnos a dar un paso hacia Si ustedes suben el salario mínimo, pueden ayudarnos a dar un paso hacia adelante.
And if you, the city of Emeryville, raise the minimum wage, you can help us take one step forward.
Y como comentó mi compañera, vamos a tener una acción el día de mañana. Los invitamos.
And as my coworker Juana mentioned, we're going to have an action tomorrow at 5:00 PM, and we want to invite you all.
Gracias por su apoyo.
And thank you for your support.
Is Jorge Hernandez here?
The workers in Emeryville cannot live in Emeryville since Emeryville is too high. I mean, life is very high everywhere, but Emeryville is the most expensive area. So we cannot even rent. We cannot even pay our rent. We cannot even, I mean, it's very hard to live with the minimum wage. So I, what I want to say is about the minimum wage hardly. In order to lead our life, we need support from you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ty Hudson?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Atkins and City Council. My name's Ty Hudson. I'm with United Here Local 2850. And some of our members said it a lot more, a lot of it, what I would want to say a lot more eloquently than I will or could. But I just wanted to add a couple of sort of detailed things. Our union definitely supports raising the minimum wage, and we really are, you know, thank you for bringing this, and the staff for bringing this item today. And we were part of raising the minimum wage along with SCIU 10-1 in Oakland, and definitely want to, would second everything that our brother Gary Jimenez said a few minutes ago. Just on a couple of detailed things. One, on the staff, mentioned an exemption for collective bargaining agreements. That is, if it's done correctly, something that we support, as it can help workers in a collective bargaining situation figure out where it's the best place to put their money, for example, into affordable health insurance that would otherwise be difficult to win. However, it shouldn't be a blanket exemption just because a kind of collective bargaining agreement exists. It should be something that has to be explicitly agreed to by both parties, because otherwise then you just get everybody's wages just getting lower because of the collective bargaining agreement exists. So I'd be happy to answer further questions about that if necessary. We also think it's extremely important to include, as Measure FF in Oakland did, a service charge protection. Some of you may have seen news coming out in various local papers about some restaurants in Berkeley and San Francisco in particular deciding to move to a service charge instead of a gratuity system, so that the management of the restaurant can keep the service charge and the customers think it's a gratuity, and therefore sort of reverse the effect of the minimum wage increase. A simple service charge protection that was like the one that was included in Oakland would essentially solve that problem. So we want to encourage you to do that as well. So those are just the details that we added, and we do hope that not just the council, but everybody here who wants to support will come join our members at the picket line at the Oaks Club tomorrow. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. John Nemec?
I have a slightly different message than the rest of the folks. My name is John Nemec, and I operate this small manufacturing company here in Emeryville. It's a family business. We have, you know, 50 people, and we basically manufacture apparel accessories, mainly suspenders, company name Suspenders Factory. We have started the business in 1977 in the garage in San Francisco. And basically, we built the business up from 1977 all the way up to today. We have 50 people today, and we were always able to keep the step with the minimum wage. So currently, though, if we go from $9 to 1225, and if we add 72 hours of paid sick leave, that's basically a 40% increase of our wages. Now, we don't compete with hotels in the neighborhood. We compete with the stuff that's made in China. So basically, for us, it's very critical. And the change in the minimum wage is basically extremely steep. I mean, I don't know why, you know, all of a sudden, I mean, there was a change recently from 825 to $9. We can live with that. We prepared to basically increase the wage to $10 by January 1916, or consequently, these 9%, 10% increases, we can swallow that. But it's impossible, basically, to jump and have a 36, a 40% increase from one year to the next. Now, the way we keep step with increasing the minimum wage, we basically need to increase the productivity of our folks. So what we do, we purchase automated equipment. We spent last year, sorry, in 2013, we spent about $200,000 on automated, on modern equipment. Our sales are $3.5 million, and our payroll is over $1 million. So if you take the increase of 40% on a payroll, I'm talking about production payroll. We have additional payroll for office employees and so on. So if you take the increase of 40% over $1 million, we are basically out of business. Now, nationally, the wages increase maybe 2%, maybe 3%, or, you know, and so et cetera. If you increase the wage on any company by 40%, we are going out of business. Now, let me also mention this. Our people don't do so poorly. Now, we have, let me say this, we have a bunch of immigrants like I am. I came from, you know, Czech Republic and Czechoslovakia then, and I had $20 in my pocket. I never collected a penny of unemployment. Should I stop?
That's your time, yeah.
Okay.
Public comment, three minutes.
So anyhow, I would just think that it's way too steep. If it could be slowed down for our company over a period of time, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Well, it sounds like that gentleman there isn't running, doesn't have a viable business. Can't afford to pay his employees anything higher than poverty wages, so it's not a viable business.
Excuse me, can I?
No, I'm sorry, I'm speaking here.
Can I come?
No, I'm sorry, I'm speaking. So we all remember Measure C, the Living Wage for Hotel Workers, passed in 2005. The entire Emeryville elite, save Ruth Atkins, came out against it. And there were all these dire warnings, the hotel industry is going to collapse, and the hospitality industry is kaput in Emeryville. And it passed, and we actually are now increasing the number of hotels. And so that was, so you always get business people up here, you know, crying in the beer and saying that they're going to be driven out of business. And maybe some will, maybe some non-viable ones will, but that's, you know, we don't want non-viable businesses in our town. So, you know, we have, $110,000 was spent to defeat Measure C, and the people of Emeryville said, we don't care how much money you're spending on this. This is, we are interested in economic justice here. And so, you know, that's what people here have told us, and I think it's sort of behooves us to move forward with this, and I think we should take a leadership role like we did with Measure C. The people in Emeryville support this. We know that, it's extremely important. But the way the staff is suggesting this happens, if you look all the way up to 2021, we're still only $13.26 an hour here in Emeryville. And I just think that's just not good enough. I think we have a lot to make up for here in this town with, after, you know, a generation of all this fast food and the service sector jobs that we're importing here, I think we have a lot to make up for here. And we have, we have to create a town that's not like the town we have been creating up till now. And so, looking here, $13.26 in 2021, no, it's not good enough. We need a pathway to $15 an hour. That's reasonable. And also, the gentleman that talked about the service charge protection, that's extremely critical, because we know that employers will try to game the system, and that's like incredibly cynical, shocking to hear that, but not surprising. So we need to have protections like that, make sure that the employers can't do an end run around this. But anyways, I'd like to see that, I'd like to be proud of my city here, like why it was when we passed Measure C. So I think we should do a pathway to $15 an hour, and let's take a leadership role here and just be a little better than Oakland. And, you know, we don't have to shoot as low as Oakland. So I strongly encourage you to move forward with $15 an hour. Thank you.
Bill?
Mayor Atkins, city councilors, let me bring a slightly different perspective on this issue. I'm a longtime resident here in the city. I've been serving on the Finance Advisory Committee, and more recently, I've been serving on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. My experience there illustrates or demonstrates to me that the city has been smart and adept and wise at supporting its business community, both large businesses and small businesses. And that's appropriate. In fact, that's helped us in the long run. Now, the other leg of this business is taking care of the folks who come into our city to work on hourly wages in retail and in the businesses of that sort, in that kind of work. I think that we can lead here. I don't think there's any particular economic disadvantage to the community as a whole if we're bold, if we go for $15 an hour, or try to get there as fast as we can. That's the right thing to do. That's the honorable thing to do, and I think the economically sound thing to do for the city. Thanks.
I just wanted to point out that $12 an hour on a full-time basis, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, translates to $24,000 a year. So you can imagine trying to live on that in the Bay Area. So yes, we do need a minimum wage ordinance. We need a path to $15. Because of the amount of retail and service industries in Emeryville, I think we can afford to lead, as Bill said. We need labor standards as well, and I think not just for formula retail. I think that needs to apply across the board. And in terms of the suddenness of the raising of the minimum wage, let's look at this over the long term. How many years has it been since we actually had an increase in the minimum wage? If this had been a gradual thing, we probably would be way beyond $15 at this point. So it's way long overdue. That's why it seems sudden. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I've been thinking a lot about Martin Luther King, reading a lot right now. It's important. And thinking about his economic and social bill of rights. And I was struck when reading some of his words, when he said, "What good is having the right to sit at a lunch counter if you cannot afford to buy the hamburger?" And I think that sums it all up, really. And when you think of how many of our workers struggle, they work two jobs, they work three jobs, they will have part-time jobs, or even if they have full-time jobs, the pay is atrocious, and they can't live on it, and we can't expect them to live on it. And I think we need to reevaluate what's been happening, and the obscene profits that go on, and the lack of social consciousness. That seems to cloud our view of what people need to live. And I think, given his words, given the time, I think we, I know Emeryville can do better, and I know we can be leaders, and I'm hoping we'll start off with 15 and go from there. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, I'm closing public comment, council comments?
Mayor Atkins, I think staff has presented us with a fairly good outline of how we can move this forward, getting information from, you know, from public meetings and using that, utilizing that. And so I would propose that we would move forward with what the staff proposal is here in terms of the setup of moving this minimum wage action forward.
I really don't like this timeline at all. There are a couple things here. First of all, an online survey. Online surveys are not very useful, right? To the degree that you're going to get feedback from people who like online surveys, then they're useful. But I don't think that that's going to give us any kind of necessary viable, helpful information. I also think that two community meetings is overdoing it. We're having a meeting right now. We're talking about the minimum wage right now. The chamber knows about this, right? They, the businesses in town should know about this. And, again, my time's up. No. And I think we are, we're behind. We can't keep asking people to work and live in poverty. And so we need a more compressed timeline than the one that we're looking at here. The community input, I'm not sure what we're looking for, right? In terms of making a policy, we're going to have people, it's going to look a lot like what I got tonight. A lot of people supporting the minimum wage, talking about a path to 15, right? And then folks talking about the implications for their business. That framework is not going to change, no matter how long we wait. That's the debate that we're entering into, and I think that we need to make a decision much sooner. Late 2015, early 2016 is too far out. It's being done all around us, and the time to get it done is now. The research has been done by UC Berkeley. We can't ask staff to try and outperform the researchers at UC Berkeley on this issue.
I have a comment that I'd like to make, which is that, as Michelle commented, we had a city living wage ordinance that was passed in 2006 that pertains to city employees and those who contract with the city. When we, council first talked about this a few months ago, I made the distinction between what are we trying to do? Are we trying to do a minimum wage? Are we trying to do a living wage? And the, it seemed to me that what we wanted to do, or what I would like to do, is have a, set a floor to raise the level of poverty up, so that if someone were able to work full-time at that base wage, they would earn more than what would qualify them for any kind of public assistance program. And $15 an hour basically gets us there, but with our city living wage ordinance, we're currently for this year at $14.03. So I would like to propose some sort of wage package that starts at 1403 to make it consistent with our other living wage ordinance. And then we could talk about paid sick leave and work standards and some other things that might be a little harder to flesh out. But I would propose... Actually, that rate will go up with the CPI as of July 1 of 2015, but basically, the point is to be consistent with our city living wage ordinance. But we shouldn't do a wage that still qualifies people for Medi-Cal or some of these other public assistance programs. And California now has expanded Medi-Cal eligibility, which is at 138% of the federal poverty level. So we need to figure out what an hourly wage is that would exceed that level. And I think it's closer to 1483 when this was last in our agenda packet. But I did a little bit of, we had the federal poverty level table added to our packet, and we worked it out. But anyway, that's my, what I would like us to see happen is that, it's not to say that there's enough jobs that are full-time at that base rate and that not everybody who works a minimum wage job will be able to work all the hours that they want, but if they were full-time, that they would not qualify for any kind of public assistance. That's kind of raising people out of poverty, that they, so they can support themselves. That's a living wage.
Mayor Atkins, what are you thinking about in terms of time? When do you want to do this?
Well, I think, I would like to see, the next CPI jump up is in July. That's half a year away. I think that we could implement something by July. I think that's reasonable. I do think people, the business community, needs to be informed, and I don't, we haven't done, the city has not done its outreach to the business community. I think they just need to know this is coming down the pike. But I would like to see an implementation date of July.
But that's just for the hourly wage? And then the other considerations?
Well, we could add in what Lift Up did for, around sick leave. I mean, that's not, that's a no-brainer. But what remains a little bit fuzzy to me is what kind of labor standards, and if we're here to dictate that across a bunch of industries that we really don't know very much about or whatever. So I have, around that particular piece, I need to learn a lot more before I would feel comfortable legislating about it.
That makes some sense. That makes a lot of sense. I would support that with a July, you know, target rate of July.
Okay.
So that particular segment, we would move forward with that.
Are we carving out just the retail worker's bill of rights to do some further study on, but then adopting the other pieces of Lift Up Oakland, like the no carve-outs?
Service charge protection.
And the service charge protection. I'm trying to understand exactly what we're picking up from Lift Up Oakland, because I want to pick up all of it, right, and then go ahead and go with the 1403.
You know, the scheduling thing is huge in the retail industry. They just drive people crazy and make life almost impossible. I think we, I think that the total package we've seen is really important for all the different aspects, because retail tends to just parse people and have them change schedules so quickly. It's really a problem. I mean, it almost means more than, you know, the nickel and diming a little bit higher than Oakland. No, the total look at what we've been given means that someone can live with dignity. And so it's not just the dollar amount. It's really, the working conditions are really important. And I agree that, I think it's good to have a region-wide issue. I think that not, you know, surging ahead of Oakland, I don't think is, that could have consequences that we need to consider. I'm, you know, I'm not so, I don't feel the need to, you know, step out in front and be the absolute leader for wages. I feel like we have to make sure the working conditions are really good first and that we have a region that is doing that, that we embrace our neighbor Oakland, who is looking at that, is looking at the real working conditions. I think that's really important. And the strength of matching a city means that businesses don't see any advantage to go from one city to the next other than other factors. So, you know, that's, that's important. I don't think we should, you know, step out with a higher wage and reduce working conditions or anything like that. I think it's important to really look at the, the region is important.
Well, that's not what I'm proposing. Instead, I'm asking for a two-step process and to fast-track the wage issue and the Lift Up Oakland model now, knowing that what we have with the retail worker's bill of rights, which is pretty recent in San Francisco, might deserve further study. It's not something that we've translated yet over to the East Bay. And trust me, I want to have a retail worker's bill of rights over here in Emeryville. I mean, you know, large formula retail, I used to work in retail, uh-huh, in management moons and moons ago, and they have software that can tell them how many bars of soap they have on hand in the building and when they need to order it, and when the peaks and valleys come in their sales history, but they can't schedule people predictably, right? I mean, it's something that I think we can also lead on in the East Bay, but I think staff is going to need a little bit more time on that last piece of it, whereas the Lift Up Oakland model is already, is already there for us. But if you don't, if your issue is with the wage, right, the 1403, right, that's a different story. But I'm saying, I do want to do both.
I want to do the faster scheduling. I don't think two meetings are necessary.
Yeah.
And because, you know, we need to, in effect, move as a region. Oakland has already moved. We don't want to cut out, we want to make sure we hear from all the businesses. We might not have heard a lot of things. We need to hear. But at the same time, it just seems that, you know, if we, we have catching up to do, because we need to have our region function as one in this way. And so, you know, I'm open to a higher rate if I can see that it's not going to harm our city in some way, but I just want to make sure that it's considered.
I don't know that it's going to harm our city so much as help workers, and I think that it might also, with us leading, other people might be pressured to move. And I think that that's, that's how it, how it may work. I don't necessarily think it's going to put us at some kind of competitive disadvantage. And I mean, all the points that Ruth is making, right, about people not having to access social services, right, when they have kind of a floor under them, it's really important. And then also, you know, thinking about not just workers, but all the folks who spoke to us today, they have families, right? Right now, in the United States, 20% of children live in poverty. There just came, a study came out this week, 50% of public schoolchildren are now living in poverty. And in Emeryville, it's much higher than that in terms of our school population. So it's, it will have a redounding effect, right? Not just for the individual workers, but also for their family. So I'm very supportive of the 1403, but I also hope that we just, we go with the Lift Up Oakland model.
So one other comment I'll editorialize about just a little bit. I know the hour's late. But every once in a while, the feds come out with a jobs report and say, oh, the jobs report is getting great because 250,000 jobs were added to the, to the economy. And if you were to think about the stock market in the same way, you know, say, oh, the stock market's doing great, there's so many more open-ended mutual funds and shares of stock available to purchase, and that's why the stock market's doing so great. Well, that's not how they view a solid stock market. They view it on the value. And the creation in this country of more and more kind of minimum wage jobs that don't go anywhere is, and just because the volume of those jobs is increasing does not mean that our economy and our jobs forecast is getting any better. In fact, it's getting worse. So I feel very strongly about this issue. I've pushed for every wage ordinance in the city. So at this point, I would like to move that we give staff direction for an implementation date of July 1, using, corresponding with our city living wage rate for this year that'll be adjusted by CPI, and that we incorporate Lift Up Oakland measures that the Oakland voters just passed. So that's my motion.
Oh, I second that.
Can I just make a comment? Because I don't need to keep us here any longer, but I just want to support my co-council in this and just say that wage disparity is a social justice issue. And, you know, in light of Martin Luther King Day this week, I think this is a huge step that we're taking, and I'm proud to be a part of this movement.
Do we need a vote, or does staff have a sense of the council at this point?
Mayor, if I may, so just for clarification, so we'll bring back a proposed ordinance, or would you like us to do a community meeting, or are we just going to go ahead and bring something back to you?
Well, the business community needs to be notified that this is happening. There needs to, people need a few months to get used to this.
So, okay, would you like to, but, but we can bring forward, I think, maybe whenever we can put together some proposed ordinance based off of the direction that we got tonight.
Yes.
And then, you know, after that, if you decide that we need to do additional outreach, you know, we will. So we'll bring it forward.
That sounds good.
Okay.
And continuing to work on the, we'll revisit the other piece of it with the retail worker's bill of rights, please.
Right. Labor standards separate.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. I know the hour's late. Thank you for speaking. So we have